I'd like to call this March 17th, 2011 Cookville City Council Meeting to order. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilman Anderson.
Present.
Councilman Woodford.
Present.
Mayor Swallows.
Here.
Vice Mayor Epps. Councilman Albright.
Present.
Four present and one absent.
Thank you. Would everyone please stand for a moment of silence, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance. Thank you.
(inaudible) to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. All right, item one is consider approval of agenda as presented. Have a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second.
Any changes?
No changes.
All right, seeing none, all vote.
Five yes votes. Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. On to item number two, proclamation recognizing Tim Brown, David Lowndes, Mitchell Kemp, with Cummins Filtration for their commitment to the Energy Efficiency Partnership. And I will read that proclamation now. Whereas Cummins Filtration has developed a model energy efficiency program that has been successful in their corporation and whereas Cummins Filtration and the city of Cookville desired a partnership in which to lead in the development and implementation of an Unplugged Challenge for the city of Cookville, and whereas this energy efficiency initiative has provided a means for the city to reduce energy usage resulting in a more earth-friendly, healthier environment and providing a reduction in costs and creating a learning environment for employees, and whereas, under the leadership of the Cummins Filtration staff of Tim Brown, David Lowndes, and Mitchell Kemp, a team of energy leaders were identified from departments within the city and the energy leader team has completed a series of training, performed an in-depth analysis, and developed a logistic plan to implement measures to reduce energy usage that can be applied not only in all city departments but in the homes of employees. And whereas the city, whereas the Cookville Unplugged Challenge has been deemed a success, we are proud of the achievement and appreciate the efforts of the employees and now by sharing their knowledge with fellow employees, the initiative can be continued. And whereas without the sense of dedication to community from the Cummins Filtration organization, this awesome go would never have been achieved. Now therefore, I, Matt Swallows, Mayor of the city of Cookville, do hereby proclaim a sense of profound appreciation to Cummins Filtration, Tim Brown, David Lowndes, and Mitchell Kemp for their dedication and commitment to the community, for their desire to create a better place to live and work, and wish them much, much success in the future endeavors. The 17th day of March, 2011. All right, that is the proclamation.
Thank you, Mayor Swallows. Mayor and council, it is with my extreme pleasure that I get to share with you one of the most positive things I think we've done here at the city of Cookville for a while. I'd like to provide you with a quick recap of our partnership with Cummins Filtration for the last 10 weeks. Tim and Dave have met with us and taught us a whole lot about energy efficiency. First of all, why does it really matter? Well, the most important reason it matters is because the city of Cookville budgets about $1.8 million a year just to cover our general department electric cost. We spend about $90,000, $95,000 a month on power, water, and sewer for buildings and general facilities. One of the most important things I want you to know is it takes about a pound of coal to produce 1,000 watts of energy. In October alone, City Hall required 33.5 tons of coal to be burned just to power this building. Our program activities, we conducted an inventory of all the electric items in the 22 city facilities. We equipped our energy leaders with kilowatt meters and determined the cost. Just a few figures, just so you know, we have 2,700 ceiling fixtures in the city, 226 computers, 170 personal heaters and fans, and 71 refrigerators. Our Cummins energy leaders presented 10 energy efficiency models with homework assignments for energy leaders each week, and we conducted our first Unplugged Challenge over the Christmas and New Year's holidays. We also were requested to make a presentation about this partnership to the Tennessee Energy Economic Development Council, Renewable Energy Economic Development Council, about our partnership with Cummins, and I've had three phone calls from cities in attendance there for us to share our information with them. We also conducted an energy hunt at our Public Works Maintenance Garage earlier this week, and each energy leader has identified additional no-cost, low-cost items that we can deal with in our departments that will help savings. Just thought I'd share a few pictures with you on our first energy hunt, which was on Tuesday. We always find time to enjoy each other as we go through our processes. The energy hunt begins, and you can tell that we were looking for ways that we could save energy, mainly heat, and ways for those things not to seep out. Dave is pointing out an energy loss near the window there. Our program accomplishments, I will share with you in more detail in a written report, but just a couple of highlights I wanted to share. During our first Unplugged Challenge, we saved about $750 over that four-day weekend. It's not a whole lot of money. The good news is we weren't doing really bad. So that's the first part. But when you start to break it down by day, we have about nine holidays a year. If it's 175 bucks a day, we can save by turning everything off. That comes up to a little over $1,500 a year that we're saving. Our electric department identified a couple of truck bays where light switches were being left on, and by turning off literally one light switch, they were able to realize $783 a year in savings. Probably our biggest key was with our water department. Our guys out there realized that we had a double-digit number of 400-watt incandescent bulbs that were staying on all the time. 400-watt bulbs are big ol' bulbs. By turning these off when they weren't needed, they calculated it down to a savings of over $4,000 a year. Our traffic signal division was able to really take it down to a smaller level. It's a smaller building by just turning off regular stuff, equipment, modules, testers, chargers. By doing so, they saved right at 1,000 kilowatt-hours on their monthly bill. That comes down to about $100 a month that they're saving on that facility. Our energy leaders were also given resources to go home with, and this is really probably the real icing on the cake. They were all given free TVA resources. We're going to share those with the other employees, product info, home energy standards, and they've all made changes at home that will help them realize savings as well. So what's next? What are we going to do next? Well, the energy leaders would like to come together and prepare a list of recommendations to give to the council to review on basic energy efficient guidelines for the city, purchasing of CFL bulbs, power strips, et cetera. We'd like to continue the program and conduct this energy leader training within each of the departments that would like to participate. We plan to continue meeting as a group. We all feel that that's very important, that we keep together, and we'd like to conduct these energy hunts at all of the facilities that want to participate. We will continue our Unplugged Challenge procedures, shutdown procedures for holidays. We need a better tracking system on how to track our savings, so that's something we'll be looking for. And we are in the process of creating switch plate reminders to go in all light switches in the city. And Jeff Cook, if you don't care if you'll share those with the city council, this is an idea that Cummins used at their plant, and our energy team came together and decided this was something they felt was important. Using their team approach and resources, worked with our sign shop and with our IT graphic people, and came up with this design. We'll figure the cost annually and hourly for each switch that controls lights in the facilities and place that on there. Couple of things that we'd like to share with you is that we'd like for not only the employees of the city of Cookville, but our whole community to join with us on March 26 and participate in Earth Hour. If you're not familiar with it, it's an international program. On March Saturday, March 26, from 8:30 to 9:30, everybody turns off their lights. We've done this at my house for the last several years. It's very telling how many times you walk in from that light switch when you've turned your breaker off, that how dependent we are on those resources. Also to participate in Earth Day, which is April 22. And if you humor me for just a second, I'd like to share a quick little 30-second video At this time, I'd like to ask Tim and Dave to come up and share just a few of their thoughts with you, as they've committed so much time and energy to this Cookville Energy Leader Program. I know they wanted to share some of their things with you. And then I'd like to introduce you to our energy leaders.
Hi, I'm David. I just would like to thank everybody on the team for the hospitality, the lunches, and just general good people to work with, and also for your patience. I know Tim can tend to drone on on some of those classes. You all managed to stay awake, and I do appreciate that. Mr. Shipley and councilpeople of the city of Cookville, we at Cummins Filtration, one of our core values is that everything that we do leads to a cleaner, healthier, safer environment. That's something that we sort of pride ourselves on at Cummins. And we value this partnership that we've been able to establish with the city of Cookville. And I truly look forward that once this Energy Leader Program gets kicked off, you know, I would love to be able to bring Mitchell, Dave, and myself back and meet maybe every two to three months just for progress updates, make sure that we are moving forward with that. So we're open to that, but I want to reiterate also what Dave was saying. We appreciate the effort and the work and just a good group of people to work with. We hope that we've given you a little more knowledge that you can take and apply both to your daily work and then work at home, because we all, together, we all can make a difference.
Thank you very much. Appreciate you all. Thank you. Okay, so very quickly, you'll just stand when I read your name, very quick. Representing our city council, Connie Albright. Connie, thank you for going through this program with us. Electric Department, Karen Brown and Tony Peak. From our fire department, stand up. From our fire department, Dell Dyer, Sean Hudson-Piller, and Benton Young. Stand up, please. From our gas department, Jeff Mills. I think Jeff had a prior engagement. From our general department, Brian Stan. Leisure Services, Jen Webb, Frank McCowen, and Chad McDonald. Thank you, guys. From our police department, Nadine Scherer. Public Works, we have Dwayne Allen, Tom Dyer, Dave McConnell, and Tommy Winningham. Thank you all. From our water department, Roger Phillips, Jeff Cook, Ronnie Omburger, and Marlin Haggard. You all have been great to work with. I can't wait to see what we do next. Thank you all very much. And if y'all'd like to leave, you're welcome to do so.
No, they gotta stay.
No. We'd like to thank all you guys. And Melinda, did you set this up specifically, our green initiative to be presented on St. Patrick's Day?
Oh, no, I didn't, but that's a great idea. I'll take full credit for it now, Mayor. Thank you very much. Thank you.
We appreciate your leadership in this.
Thank you, guys. All right, on to our old business. Item five, consider approval of minutes of council meeting held on March 3, 2011. Do you have a motion for approval?
Second.
All right, we have a motion. We have approval and second. All vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, we have two items on our consent agenda. Item six, set a date, 4/21/2011, for a public hearing on ordinance 0110304, rezoning tax map number 83, parcel 108.03, located west of 1801 South Jefferson Avenue, from RS 20, which is single-family residential, to GC, which is general commercial. Item seven on the consent agenda is consider awarding bid for the cable from the electric department. Have a motion for approval on our consent agenda.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All right, any discussion from the council? Seeing none, all vote?
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to our new business. Item eight, consider on first reading ordinance 0110303, amending Title IX, Chapter IV of the Cookville Municipal Code pertaining to taxi regulations, and sponsor is Major Randy Evans.
Mayor and council, as you know, we postponed the vote last council meeting on the new taxi ordinance in order to take a second look at some of the sections with your approval. I will not re-brief those sections that we covered last meeting, but we go into the changes that we made for this meeting. In section 9-402, the question come up about, or specifically what we were attempting to address here, was ownership and the qualifications for owners of taxi cab businesses. We made some changes to this section. The first change we made was where we originally had in the first draft where the applicants would have to meet certain specifications outlined in the driver's permit qualifications in 9-411. We changed that sentence to read that they would have to meet all those qualifications, not just the three that we had listed there previously. And also with the help of Mr. Rader, there was some language drafted in paragraph six under 9-402, which, and I'll paraphrase, which basically says that any current owner that doesn't meet those requirements is basically grandfathered, and they may continue to own their business unless they are subsequently convicted of a felony or they cease to be an owner. In 9-405, we took a second look at the liability insurance requirements. The original ordinance was $50,000 for bodily injury, $100,000 total per death in accident, and $100,000 for property damage. We changed those limits to 100, 300, and 100,000. And under 9-411, under the requirement to be a US citizen, we added the language, if you're a resident alien, you have to have a current work permit or other valid US, United States Immigration or Naturalization Service documentation. And I would recommend your approval.
Thank you, Major. Major Evans.
Randy, we're also add the section that if any part of this ordinance or provision of any section is held to be legally invalid, the remaining provisions remain in full force and effect.
Section two.
So I think the council needs, you have to consider the original, I mean, you've got a motion and a second for the original ordinance, and then if you want to take these recommendations for changes, that would take a motion. You'd have to amend that motion.
Do we have approval for?
First, I am so moved.
Second.
All right.
I have a motion to amend the original motion. Motion to amend the original motion to add the following paragraph at the end of section 9-402. Provided, however, that any owner of a taxi business as of the effective date of this ordinance that does not meet the requirement of 9-411, number four, may continue to be an owner unless, one, the owner is convicted of a felony, pleads guilty to a felony, or pleads no contest, nolo contendere, to a felony, or, two, ceases to be an owner. In the event of number one, the owner immediately forfeits the permit. In the event of number two, the owner must meet all criteria set forth in 9-411 to obtain a new permit to be an owner. Nothing in this paragraph may be construed to permit an owner, under this exception, to be a driver. And to delete the following sentence from section 9-402, applicants and all partners shall meet qualifications 1, 2, 4, and 5 in 9-411, and substitute in lieu thereof the following. Applicants and all partners shall also meet the driver's permit qualifications outlined in section 9-411. And to change the insurance minimum limits in section 9-405 to 100,000 for bodily injury or death per person, 300,000 for bodily injury or death per accident, and 100,000 property damage. And to delete number two of section 9-411 and insert in lieu thereof the following. Number two, be a US citizen or if a resident alien, have a current work permit or other valid United States Immigration and Naturalization Service documentation. And to add the following section. Section two, if any part of this ordinance or any provision of any section is held to be legally invalid, the remaining provisions remain in full force and effect.
Thank you, Councilman Albright. Do we have a motion for approval on the amendment?
I second the amendment.
Second.
All right. I just want to make clear this amendment with respect to the grandfathering in that Major Evans spoke about. Basically, I think the council was concerned that currently the ownership provision does not limit people with respect to felonies, and the concern was they didn't want to disenfranchis somebody who was currently an owner that may qualify. So this provision provides that that owner, as of the effective date of this ordinance, can continue to be an owner unless that owner is convicted of a felony, or pleads to a felony, or pleads no contest to a felony. In the event that happens, the permit for that owner is revoked. Or if the owner sells the business, or otherwise goes out of business, or somehow is not the owner, then if that person re-appeals, they have to comply with all the provisions, including no felony within 10 years. And lastly, the drivers have always been required that they could not have a felony on their record for 10 years. And nothing in this paragraph allows an owner who has a felony within 10 years to drive a vehicle. So you can be an owner, but you can't be a driver if you have a felony less than 10 years old. So this gives the owners who may have a felony and who may qualify right now kind of a second chance, but they are, if they do get in any kind of trouble at all, they forfeit their permit, and they cannot drive, or their permit can be revoked. So it gives them the chance to conduct their business as long as they obey the law.
Thank you, Mr. Rader. Any discussion from the council?
Definitely, this, when we looked into it and when it was presented to us, we felt like there, it needed to be done and that we needed to put some stipulations on it. And as we moved forward, you know, it was never the intent to take anybody out of business, but we want to make sure that this ordinance is the best for the entire community at any time. And I feel like with the addition of the amendment, that takes care of that problem of somebody who may have had a business legally before this ordinance, and now definitely, you know, it goes to show you that anytime we do something here at council, we always are in the learning mode. And I appreciate your work on this and everything that has gone into it, because it hasn't been a simple process.
I did want to say one more thing. I want to remind everybody, and maybe people don't realize this generally, but these permits have to be renewed every year, and they're only good for one year. And if some trouble develops and they can't meet the qualifications, when their permit comes up for renewal, it will not be renewed. So it is a yearly examination to make sure all the criteria are met, both for the owner and for all the drivers.
Thank you. Any other discussion from the council? Any discussion from the audience?
If we could.
Yes, sir, if you'd please come forward.
Good evening. My name's John Parsons, and I'm representing all the taxi companies in town. First of all, they do appreciate the changes that were made. And the only question that we have is about the change in insurance. And the question I would have, and my clients would have, is if it's possible, I have one client has 10 taxis, and so they doubled his insurance rate. If it's possible if an umbrella, and Mr. Rader may, would suffice, a million-dollar umbrella or 2 billion-dollar umbrella would suffice instead of individual rates? I don't know if that's a, if that makes a difference in terms of cost, but it does make a difference in terms of, instead of having individual rates for each taxi they own, where you're doubling their insurance cost, if an umbrella would cover that.
Well, the insurance limits 100, 300 are very standard rates or coverages in the insurance business. And I'm sure there are coverages that these businesses can get. I know, for example, the school system that I represent, under the Government of Torque Liability Act, has higher limits than this. 300,000. The city and all its vehicles and all its employees has higher limits than this. Most businesses have higher limits than this. So basically, if they ask for my recommendation, I think these limits are still too low, but they're still higher than they were before. I thought, I told them, I thought the $50,000 limit was woefully inadequate, were my exact words.
I think you're right.
But I think, I think this is a very good compromise, and I think most, I think the 100, 300 policy is a very standard policy and is available in the market for reasonable cost, and they can, they can explore their options with respect to some umbrellas if they want to, and submit those certificates, and they'll be examined on a case-by-case basis. But I really think this is a very reasonable requirement to protect the public and to protect the taxi businesses.
Certainly.
And the drivers, because they're the ones who are actually being protected from civil liability by this insurance. And of course, then, some passenger or some third party who may be involved in an accident would also be protected by the fact that they know the city taxis do at least have this minimal amount of insurance to protect them in the event of an accident. So I, you know, we just have to examine those certificates on a case-by-case basis, but I think that each accident, each driver would have to be, each vehicle would have to be covered with this minimum amount of limits, in my view, based on the ordinance, the way it's presently presented. And I have a very difficult time recommending anything less than that.
All right. Well, thank you.
Mr. Parsons, I think they would have a lot of trouble finding an umbrella that would sit over limits that low.
I understand.
I think.
You may be right, and that's one thing we would like to, if they could explore, but we understand it. And we're on the issue of, and my clients actually also have a suggestion of going to a couple of other points, and one would be, in a lot of cities, since, and their business expenses are going up, that we would propose perhaps that we look at adding to the ordinance requirement that they display their rates. We're trying to protect the public as well, and our folks are willing to display their rates and even, maybe even set minimums, so that if somebody comes into the city, a guest, and wants to take a cab from one of the hotels to downtown or to a venue up here, that there's, they know what their rates are. At this point, anybody could charge anything, and if there's minimum rates that the city wants to consider, or a per-mile rate that should be displayed for the public to see, they're willing to do that, and we think that that should be, it would also help them in terms of if their, their business expenses run up some, that they will be able to have the council consider that. We have, we have some, there's some, taxi rates are incredibly inexpensive in this town. You can go from basically one side of town to the other for $4, $5, which is amazing. But also, there are instances where somebody takes a cab and there's no, you know, it's whatever, whatever somebody wants to charge, and we think that would be a fair, something that could be looked into. Other than that, we do appreciate particularly ownership's issue that came up, that that was looked into and is dealt with fairly, and we thank you for your consideration of that matter. Thank you.
Thank you.
I was thinking this ordinance already, it requires them to display their rates. I was thinking.
Mr. Shipley, you'll find that in 9-414. There is a requirement to display the permit and the rate.
Well, is there a movement to set rates or certain rates, or counts?
Would you, would you set a minimum rate or a maximum rate?
I would set a maximum rate.
Okay, you said minimum.
I'd be reluctant to get any kind of price fixing or the count. I think, I think the market can, I think they can, taxi can display their rates, and then the customer knows what they're charging when they, when they get in, and if they don't like it, they can call another taxi. But I think the market would set the rates.
Yeah, I agree with that.
We don't need to get involved in the rate.
Yeah, I don't want to.
But thank you, though. Any other discussion from the audience? All right, seeing none, any more discussion from the council?
Don't we have to vote on the amendment first?
Yes.
All right. So we're voting on the amendment?
Yes.
All right, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right. Any discussion from the council on the ordinance as amended?
No.
All right. All vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Major Evans. All right, on to item nine. Consider Consider awarding contract for sign inventory and management system. Sponsor's Public Works Department. Mr. Greg Brown.
Mayor and Council, we recently received proposals to do a sign inventory and management system. I'd kind of like to go over a little background before we get into the cost. This is a result of a federal rule that went into place in January of two thousand and eight. And the reason for the change was only about twenty-five percent of the travel occurs at night, but roughly fifty percent of fatalities occur then. And some of the studies have shown that the reason for those fatalities is the lack of sight visibility for some of the signs. And the requirements for this new rule are in the two thousand and nine version of the manual on uniform traffic control devices, which is what they call MUTCD. And part of those requirements, there's some deadlines set for being in compliance. The first one is January of two thousand and twelve, because you have to implement a method for maintaining traffic sign retroreflectivity at the, at or above the minimum levels. And this is what this proposal will do. It's, we'll, I'll get into that in a minute, but this will, when we complete this, we will be in compliance with that deadline. The next one is January of two thousand and fifteen, is to replace all the noncompliant regulatory and warning signs, which is stop signs, speed limit signs, yield signs. And the last one is January of two thousand and eighteen, is to replace the noncompliant overhead guide signs and street name signs. The scope of work is outlined in the proposal. The first thing they'll do is assign inventory, which they'll go around during the daytime, locate all signs, take a digital photograph of it, and note the condition of the, of the sign as far as the post, and things like that. After that, they'll, the assessment of the sign performance, what we've done at night, they will go back to all these signs again and check the retroreflectivity of each sign, and gives it a poor, fair, or good rating. The last thing, they'll set up a web-based sign inventory database that we'll use along with, and they'll use our GIS system, which we can access all this data. We can pull up every sign that's in fair or poor condition. We can set up a maintenance schedule where this one signs need to be replaced, they'll pop up and let us know. Also provide us what they call a field asset tool. It's like a iPad that when the sign guys are out in the field, and they're doing maintenance on a sign, they can enter what they do in the field, and it will connect to this web-based database and update it right then in the field. So they won't have to write it down and go back to the office and do it that way. And if we get started, hopefully this month, it should be August is when we should be complete with this project. So we should be in compliance with the January deadline. We received a proposal from three M. The total estimated cost is a hundred and seventeen thousand, three hundred and fifty-eight dollars and seventy-five cents. This is based on their estimated count of eleven thousand, seven hundred and fifty signs. At the end of the project, whichever way the final count goes, we'll adjust that amount to reflect that. I think that's it, and I would recommend your approval.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved.
We have a motion and a second.
Second.
Any discussion from the council? Questions?
Mr. Brown, when you, will it be the city of Cookeville employees checking the signs at night, or?
No, it'll be three M.
That'll be three M doing it?
Everything outlined will be performed by three M, and then they'll just give everything they do at the end, and then we'll have access to that after it's completed. It's a very labor-intensive undertaking.
Yeah.
Because they'll have to ride every, every street, and look at every sign that we have.
Do you know when they're going to start?
Well, after we sign the contract, Mark McKinley with three M is here. If you have any questions for him, he might be able to answer that.
Thank you, Greg.
Thank you, Council Mayor. Yeah, just as soon as this contract is signed, we should be able to go to work in forty-five days.
Forty-five or forty-five?
Forty-five. Business is good, but forty-five days, yeah.
So when we see people out looking at signs, we shouldn't report malicious behavior, right?
Hopefully not, no. We'll do this with a high-resolution video cameras and a SUV, and we will, hopefully we won't be out at too late of hours at night, but it's a very rapid process, and we'll, we'll try to take all that into consideration so we don't cause any problems.
That's cool.
Any other discussion?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion from the audience? Seeing none, it's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, on to item ten. Consider approval of change order for the West Cemetery Road Extension Project. Sponsor's Mr. Greg Brown from Public Works.
Mayor and Council, the West Cemetery Road Extension Project is complete, and after all the work is completed, we've had a total of all the quantities that we used. Like I said, this is a unit price contract, so the actual quantities will vary from the estimated quantities in the contract. They've listed the, all the quantities that were either above or below what was in the contract. One of the main ones that went above was the undercutting in the backfield where we had some bad material in the road. That pretty much amounts to the exact change order. It's, the total amount over the contract is sixty-six thousand, four hundred and thirty-two dollars and eleven cents. And we had a total amount over was a hundred and eighteen thousand, three hundred and four dollars. And the list, this is a list of items that were under the contract amounts, and that amounted to nearly fifty-two thousand dollars. And if you've got any questions about any of the particular items, I'll be glad to ask them. Also, I've got a picture of, you might be able to see it, but this is where the, where it had all the undercut. You can see the red dirt here, that's good to build on. You can see this line here. That's where the topsoil began. And the finished grain of the road is way up here, so they had to remove all of this and replace it with rock. And that's, that's why we had the extra amount of undercut in backfield.
Thank you. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
All right, any questions from the council?
What'd you do with that topsoil?
They stockpiled it on the side, and then when they used it on the berm on the south side or any other places, they just use that as what they're going to have to have anyway, so.
Well, it looks good out there. I drove it just the other day, it looks great. And drove fine.
Good.
I mean, it's more than just looking good than what it did.
Did you have any trouble seeing any of the signs or anything?
No, I didn't.
Those are probably good.
Talk about an unfunded federal mandate.
Any other discussion? All right, seeing none, all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
All right, item eleven. Consider approval of change order for the South Jefferson Avenue Widening Project. Sponsor's Greg Brown from Public Works.
Mayor and Council, this is the South Jefferson Widening Project, and this is the same situation with the unit quantities here. Got it listed of the ones over and under. Some of the main ones over with some of the asphalt. When we were building South Jefferson, the way the road was crowned, it took a little more asphalt to get us, to have enough asphalt to make the cross-section look the way it was supposed to look. And the items below, there were just several items that we did not use that was in the contract, which gave us the sixty thousand dollars less than that. Total amount of the change order is twelve thousand, seven hundred and forty dollars and seventy-nine cents, and I'd recommend your approval.
Thank you, Greg. Do we have a motion for approval?
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Any from the audience? Seeing none, it's all vote.
Four yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Greg. All right, that ends our new business for the night. This is the portion of the meeting where we have a hearing of citizens and/or delegations. If anyone wants to get up and address the council for any reason, talk about any, anything going on, or have any questions, they're welcome to do so. We do ask that you limit it to three minutes, though. Yes, sir.
I'm Clay Robertson, and I'm the library director. And as budget season is almost upon us, I'd like to take this opportunity to invite everyone in the council, come by the library, and take a look around, and talk with us about our plans for the future. And as Ms. Anderson and Ms. Albright are already familiar faces over there, we hope that the rest of the council and the city manager will come by and just get to know us all over there. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Robertson. Anyone else? Anything from the council?
I wanted to just encourage everybody to get outside, enjoy the beautiful weather. I've been walking around Dogwood Park, and I'm looking forward to the time we'll have grass there. And every time it rains, I think it's going to delay it that much longer. And in, I think the first weekend in April, Cookeville's going to be sponsoring Doggapalooza, and that's a fun event to bring your dog out to Dogwood Park, and there'll be several things to do. There's a play at the Drama Center right now, and just get out and enjoy this beautiful weather and hope that winter doesn't come back.
Thank you.
Yes, I want to take this opportunity to say thank you to Melinda for heading up this, our energy leader team. It was a great opportunity for me to meet the, the energy leaders and to, to work with them, and also to thank Mr. Shipley for giving us the opportunity to do this and to partner with Cummins Filtration. I think it's, it has a lot of possibilities for us, and it's, I'm looking forward to the rest of it.
Thank you.
Melinda, I did have a question. Are you trying to, is the city trying to turn things off over the weekends, too, or is it just holidays?
Councilman Anderson, our goal would be weekends, too.
Okay.
But, but as you know, it takes just, it's an education process.
Sure, sure.
And, and we're all the world's worst at home, so the switchplates, we hope, will kind of begin to do that, and they become daily shutdown procedures.
Right.
And not, not just on the weekends or on holidays. So that, that's the goal.
Yeah.
That's the goal. It's the small things like that that can make a really big difference.
Well, and every little bit helps.
Yes.
I mean, it's, and an awareness is the very first thing that we need to get to, so that you can go on to the movement. And I think you guys have done a great job here.
Thank you. It takes a team. We've had a great team. Tony Peake has been wonderful, too. I mean, his TVA relationships have provided more resources for our energy leaders, because part of the goal is to help them to save money at home as well, so.
Sure.
Thanks, Tony and Karen.
Thank you. I would like to, to thank all the energy leaders, because, I mean, you didn't have to do that, and, but we just appreciate everybody putting in the extra time and effort to, to do this. It's, it's going to help save everybody, the city and everybody. I also have an announcement I wanted to, in case you didn't see the paper today. The two thousand and ten census numbers are in, and Cookeville is over thirty thousand in population now. I don't know the exact number, because I'm doing this by memory.
Thirty thousand, four fifty-three.
Four fifty-three.
Thirty-five.
Four thirty-five?
Yeah, you're transposing numbers.
We're somewhere between that. So anyway, that, we moved up one spot, I think, from, from twenty-one to number twenty, so I think we're the twentieth largest city in the state of Tennessee.
Which is just fine with us.
That's just good. That is good. Slow, steady growth is good, nothing too fast. Also, Putnam County, I think, moved up from number twenty to number nineteen, is that right? So the nineteenth largest county.
Nineteenth to eighteenth, I think. Nineteenth to eighteenth, wasn't it?
I thought it was twentieth to nineteenth.
Maybe he should have just done this.
It's numbers, numbers stick up here.
Anyway, we're growing.
We're growing.
At a good, slow pace.
Can I tell you what the Vanderbilt score is?
No.
Okay.
But anyway, those are good numbers. So, anything else? Happy St. Patrick's Day. This meeting is adjourned.